I'd like to call the November twentieth school committee meeting to order. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody, early. Tonight we'll have our usual consent agenda, public input, reports, and then we'll get here for a parent university update, the first reading of revised policy JICFB bullying prevention, and then the, a calendar discussion and vote. Is there any public input or anything not on the agenda? Seeing none? Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Sorry?
Can I remove the October thirtieth minutes? For just a tiny little typo. But can I remove those and do them separate?
Second. Second. All those in favor of the consent agenda as amended?
Very small thing, oh may I?
Yeah.
On the October thirtieth minutes, I reported out on the Reading three seventy-five committee celebrating the three hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary. It just says two seventy-five. So if the committee were comfortable with that edit, that's my only suggestion.
I second that edit. Yeah. Can we, can we approve the minutes with that edit and Linda will update it?
Yep.
So a motion to approve the minutes of the October thirtieth school committee meeting as amended by Ms. Borowski.
Second. Second. Yes.
No, just.
All of them. Five, excuse me, five zero. Okay, now we'll have reports.
I have a quick report which Gina probably had too, but we went to the three seventy-five trivia night and it was really fun. It was great. I think there were fifteen or so tables of six people there. There was great food. There was tons of great volunteer staff. The questions were fun. It wasn't, it was not Reading trivia. There was some Reading trivia in there. And, by the way, it's Joshua and Wildcats. We were trying to come up with the names of all the, actually that was one of the.
Wood End.
I mean, sorry. Yeah, Wood End Wildcats.
Was the one we were struggling with.
I saw a car on the way here and they had their Wood End Wildcats on the back. One of the questions was what was the mascot of Killam? So, and you wouldn't know that one. I had an in.
Koala.
Yeah. And, so. It was really fun. So I highly recommend it. They're gonna do it again in the spring, they said. And I would highly recommend it. It was just great fun. Get yourself a table of six. Or you can just show up and join a table of people.
So was it like the, when we did that, what was that? Did you do that RCTV time motel?
No, much lower, much lower stress.
And we got set up by a question by the board of selection and lost.
No.
No, but we came in.
Much lower stress.
Our team did come in third place.
Yep.
We had Ms. Borowski and her husband and her son.
Yep.
And I had my son and his girlfriend, both Reading high graduates.
Yeah.
And we did come in third place and it was a big runoff at the end. We were seven question tie we were by.
Yep, the tie was really hard to break. It was a really fun event and I would add that incredibly well attended. So I'm sure it was a successful fundraiser, but really fun to meet sort of different people that I only see at town meeting and to get to socialize with them and have a few laughs, so.
Yeah, it was.
Really fun.
Right.
It's good group, so I recommend it.
I have a couple of reports. One is there was a successful organizational meeting for Reading embraces diversity and they had a successful event with the library kindness rocks. The Reading embraces diversity and human relations advisory committee are cosponsoring conversation with Dr. Anna Ornstein, who is a child psychiatrist and Holocaust survivor at Coolidge on November twenty-ninth at seven. We're hoping everybody will come. Everybody will share the information that's going out there. We'd really love it to be an animated inclusive conversation about the comparison, compare and contrast the nineteen thirties in Europe before World War Two and after with current day, what's happening in the current day. So it'd be great if folks came. Also wanted to report on the success of Jams for Jake. That was an amazing testament to our graduates of the Reading Public Schools because it was the brainchild of our graduates and they brought it to fruition, including meeting and fundraising goals and hiring bands and doing police details. And Erica McNamara outdid herself again, freezing her toes off the entire day into the night with them. It was a wonderful event to raise the awareness of addiction and a sensitivity to those who are suffering from addiction and creating a community of support for families who are grappling with family members. It was a great way, a great start towards preventing tragedies. And the kids, the kids are not kids anymore. The young adults are really motivated and talented. And a shout out to John Oliver and Lauren Anderson, Allison Stager, Michael Wondell, and a whole bunch of other graduates who did an awesome job. And the bands were good, too. A shout out to Pippin, the cast of Pippin. It was an amazingly, am I stealing your thunder?
Oh, no, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't even.
I won't say much, except it was a really complicated show to do and done incredibly well. And I'll leave the rest to you.
Oh, no, the show was amazing. It was so good. It went Friday night, blew me away completely. So cool.
And that's a real testimony to the hard work, teamwork, kids with different strengths working together on a team to make a production. And they have to work with adults to do it, but they have to work with each other. And just an incredible feat. And, and not all on the stage, backstage, in the arts and graphics that they do and.
Yeah, it was, it was amazing.
Fundraising and everything.
Right.
And. Oh, we have in the works, we have our two middle schools and our high school are bringing Anna Ornstein to do assemblies there as well. And that's actually in the works. I think we have a date and time. Coolidge is December first. And I think that Parker we have settled. I won't mention the date until it's all confirmed. So that's.
And we're working on the high school as well?
Yes, we're working on the high school. Yes. Thank you.
I have two quick reports. The audit committee met last week to look over, to hear from the auditors on RMLD, the annual audit. And two things of note for the committee. One is one that I think we're all aware of, that beginning soon, it's on the horizon. I think it's next year, but don't, it's coming up really soon, if not next year. There's gonna be a really significant change to accounting rules where the OPEB liability needs to be on the front balance sheet. So what's going to happen is there'll be a big ballooning of several million dollars in our liabilities. The only good news is the rule is going into effect for all municipal utilities and all municipalities at the same time. So it'll happen for us, but it'll happen for everyone. So anyone looking at those is going to see it consistently across the board. And we've known about it for years and so I'm just, heads up that that change is coming and we're all prepared for it. I did ask the question at the meeting, how our funding of OPEB on RMLD kind of related to our peers? And our auditors felt it was really good, really strong. They generally.
How we are compared to parent communities?
We're paying it up at a rate that is respectable relative to our peers. The audit was clean. It was very strong. They were very happy with what they found. And in fact, they said in fifty to seventy percent of their similar audits that they do, they do a management letter and they didn't for us. They didn't find anything worth leaving a note on. So it was a really strong audit, very good, very good meeting, but something to be proud of for sure. And my other update is a reminder to the community that the Reading Education Foundation is having its annual festival of trees the first weekend in December, the second and third. It's gonna be an amazing, fun event. They do an incredible job raising tens of thousands of dollars every year that directly support our schools. So definitely get out and go to that. And I want to express my gratitude to the committee for your, we have a hundred percent participation. So thank you all for volunteering to support a tree. The school committee and central office will be supporting a tree and our theme will be the joy of learning. So it'll be a very fun celebratory tree. That's it.
Caitlin, I'm very sorry.
Oh, don't worry about it. Not too much. Just the junior versus senior powder puff game is tomorrow night at the Turf. Wednesday we have the early release and of course the pep rally. And then on Thanksgiving, there's the annual football game versus Stonem, which is home this year in Reading at the Turf, starting at ten a.m. That's it.
Thank you. Craig?
I thought I'd give a quick update about professional development, especially as, you know, we had a in-service, full day in-service on November seventh. Election day? What's election day? For some places? So I wanted to give the committee and the community an update. I know I'm not gonna hit everything. We had so many different things going on, but I thought I'd give you a taste of some of the more larger gatherings. At the elementary level, in, we had several workshops going on to support our literacy, specifically our writing goals. Our K one teachers were working with our consultant Martha Horn around the early writers' development workshop. And also our grades two and three teachers were working with our consultant Beth Moore for our writers' workshop institute, doing things like studying mentor texts for informational writing, analyzing samples of student writings, and calibrating expectations, creating tools for conferring with students about their informational writing and so forth. That's been something that's been ongoing throughout the year, but it was nice to have a full day session with them. We also had about forty-some high school teachers involved in a keys to literacy PD. Again, there's been several sessions to this PD. It's connected to our goal around reducing the achievement gap, closing that achievement gap, and a consolidation of levels. And one of the first topics that we've really been focusing on is the difference in reading skills, that when you have a diverse group of students that might struggle with reading or might have trouble accessing text. So they looked at things like, and are continuing to do this work with them, a tiered instructional model, how to deliver instruction at multiple levels to students with varying levels of literacy skills in a classroom, the basic five components of reading and the difficulties that students with learning disabilities might have with those skills that affect their own comprehension. And really how to differentiate and scaffold to provide all students, including those with learning disabilities, success in the inclusion classroom and what are some key strategies to incorporate into their instruction. All of our reading specialists at the elementary level were working together, specifically just giving, taking a look at, making sure that we're on the same page around our level literacy intervention, LLI components. We had teachers doing, and I kind of alluded to it when we were doing NCAS review or data review, doing their own analysis and review of our NCAS data, especially at the middle level. We include social studies teachers in with the ELA because the literacy standards apply to that content as well. And I was hearing great things from teachers about that. We really had a chance to collaborate and get into that. Let's see, I wanted to also mention, we hosted, this was the first time this year, we hosted what was called a next generation STEM conference that was called TEACH, an acronym, because everything has to be an acronym in communication. Technique exchange allows change to happen. And we had a number of our science teachers involved in this. Overall, we had about two hundred and fifty educators participating from around our region, other districts, and even some from other parts of the country. I know there are people here from Wisconsin, Arizona, Montana. That's because it was completely sponsored by No Adam. It wasn't about their program, but they were, they had been very interested in bringing science educators and looking to expand it in future years perhaps, around the next generation standards and what that means. And so when we volunteered to host, that means we can do that for free. So that was a great opportunity to include a bunch of our educators in that. It started off, it was sort of a range, like a mini conference, with the generals, a couple of general sessions, speakers, and breakout sessions on different topics like, and basically around the standards of good instruction, Socratic dialogue, reading strategies for content, lab planning, all different things about the new standards. They had an address by the DVSE representative on what, what some of the new standards in Massachusetts, how they applied to us. And also they had a guest speaker who was Tim Sager. Called him the guest innovator, who is the executive vice president of engineering for iRobot. Also addressed the staff. So that was, that was nice.
So was that all day? Was that the?
It was all day.
It was the whole day, yeah.
Yeah, they provided lunch for the people who participated and.
And most of our science, science and math teachers?
So all of our grades four, five teachers and all of our middle level science teachers. This is first time, and we talked about that, they're calling the STEM and focused much more on science, but I think as they go forward that they'll truly make it more of a STEM conference.
What day was it on?
That was November seventh also.
So that was on the election day?
Yes.
Yeah.
Great, so it cost nothing for substitutes, kids weren't here.
Nope, nothing. And normally, all the other districts who set, there was a registration fee, but we didn't have to register any of our students because we were.
Any of your teachers?
I'm sorry, any of our teachers. Because we were hosting the event. And so, and, and they really took care of, you know.
Oh, and all of the teachers of ours that wanted to participate were able to?
In our schools wouldn't have been open anyways on that day, so.
Yeah, so it was just, you know, sort of managing the logistics of, you know, what rooms are we gonna use? They use the performing arts center at certain times of the day. So it was just a matter of organizing that, but we were able to navigate that. And then of course, and I mentioned this last year, we had about two hundred, I think nearly two hundred of our staff participate in the N-PEN, is their acronym, it's the Northeast Professional Educator Network. And that's the collaboration of regional districts to provide professional development, especially to some of the specialized areas. Several years ago, districts realized that it's really a big challenge for all of us individually to offer continually, consistently, high quality PD, especially to areas where there might be one of these members, you know, like a phys ed teacher, an art teacher, a school psychologist or things like that, or even an entire district that's a smaller group. And so that's where they've begun. So we had, you know, like our parents, phys ed, guidance, music, art, foreign language, occupational physical therapists, speech language, our substantially separate special education teachers, library, media, technology, team chairs, things like that. And so several of the districts now, it's become pretty much a norm that they're collaboratively making November seventh. I mean, it's only the real impactful election day every couple of years, which is to make that a consistent in-service day because that way everyone has that day together and they're able to collaborate and provide that. And so different plate locations provide, you know, the arts, music, and the visual arts might be in one district and everywhere else. So, and that was really nice. It's really grown. They told me they total, they had over two thousand educators from the region participate.
In the N-PEN once?
Yeah, yeah. And there is a slight cost, but it's, I mean, it's, it's minimal considering the results because everybody is collaborating on that, so it's great.
End of subs.
End of subs. Yeah, so certainly don't get expense for that. So yeah, I just thought it's important for the community to know that when we do have those days, there's a lot going on and there's other things that I could have mentioned, but that was, that was a little of what was happening on that day.
So they would, some teachers would be going out of district to other?
Yep, I mean, there's some.
So how do we keep track of that, where everyone's going?
So they, they registered, there's, so they get certificates for being there and for achieving it. So yeah, it's all coordinated among the districts. The lists are all shared and we've got those. And it's usually pretty close districts. I mean, it's usually on that travel, so if I, you know, they're already moving to, and so forth.
Don't they need to do a certain amount of certificate work in order to maintain their certification? So this is also keeping our teachers.
All educators have to re-licens and you need a certain number of professional development points and different things, professional development hours to do that in different areas. And it's, it's part of the responsibility of school districts to provide opportunities for teachers to do that at no cost to them. And so this type of collaboration makes it more cost effective and certainly more effective to do that together.
I like the, I'm sorry. I like the idea that they're doing it together because they bring it back together so they can, when they're trying to implement something, they're not alone. They can work out the kinks by sounding off with one another.
Yeah, yeah. And you share the organization, you share the expense, you know, to say, say you're bringing somebody in. Some of it's sharing with each other, but sometimes they're bringing in experts as well. And if you only have ten people of a certain field in your district, you might not spend a certain amount of money, but if everyone contributes just a little bit, you're able to provide that type of professional development for a larger number. Yeah, and for great things. We actually had a few of our teachers, I believe, in foreign languages present this year as well. So I'm hoping that will continue to grow. Thank you.
So was there a summary of this anywhere, Craig, that I might have missed?
I didn't.
It's a, it's a report.
Yeah, no, I, right, no, I just didn't know something. I was looking in the journey, sometimes stuff like that.
It was last week.
Last week, okay, all right. Thank you.
I just wanted to give the committee a quick update coming out of town meeting last week. So very happy to report that the two capital items that we had put forth were both approved. So the Wood End Skylight project was approved. So we met with Joe Huggins this afternoon. He is moving forward with getting all of the bid specification and documentation ready to go to be launched in December. Once that's completed, we will have him come back before the committee and give an update on the selection and next steps on that. And also equally happy to report that finance committee, as well as town meeting, approved the additional eighty-five thousand capital for the district-wide wireless project that we are currently working on. So both of those were approved and we will be moving forward with that.
Thank you.
I have a few things. Some events that I was able to attend or I just wanna highlight. So first of all, I wanna highlight that last week, due to the generosity of the Reading Education Foundation, we had internet technology safety expert Katie Greer come to, during the day to present to both middle schools. And she also held a evening event for the community. Ms. Greer talks about several different trends in technology and internet safety. And so talked to the students about social media, social, internet safety, what it called digital tattoos, so making sure that you have a healthy footprint online. Case examples and real life implications, talks, talked about cell phones and smartphone devices and things to watch out for, sexting, cyberbullying. Those are some of the topics that she addressed with both. So it was very well received by both the middle schools and by the, by the community. And I wanna thank the Reading Education Foundation for providing the funding for that. I also wanted to, you didn't talk about the seventeenth, right?
I didn't.
Okay, so I just, because Carolyn would have done this if she was, if she was able to come. So we do, did have some staff being conference day. We did have some staff that were involved in professional development. Our parent educators at all three levels were involved in different types of topics. So at the preschool, elementary, and high school level, parent educators receive training on math and literacy instruction, inclusive practices, the many faces of autism, special education basics, underage substance abuse, and collaborative problem solving. Our nurses received training on five oh four combinations, which Carolyn provided. And our middle school teachers continued the training that they received beginning at the, at the beginning of the year on the Facing History in Ourselves curriculum. And I was able to spend some time at both middle schools observing that training and I just continued to walk away being very impressed by the program and the types of activities that our students are going to be involved with during their advisory on this curriculum. And I wanna thank Carolyn for organizing the bulk of this, these topics for our parent educators in particular. Takes a lot to put together different workshops and not to duplicate workshops from previous years because our parent educators have maybe already have had that. She worked with a group of parent educators, kind of like a professional development committee of parent educators to schedule these events. And I know our middle, our elementary principals were involved in some of the trainings as well. So I just wanna thank Carolyn and the elementary principals for, for providing that training. I also was able to attend, and I've had the opportunity to do this the last couple of years, what's called a national letter of intent signing day for some of our student athletes. So there were two separate days. I was not able to attend one of the days, but I was able to attend the other one. So these are, these are all seniors. Kevin Spear signed a national letter of intent for swimming to attend Drexel University next year. Jack Geiger signed a national letter of intent for lacrosse to attend UMass Amherst next year. And Ben Brungard signed a national letter of commitment to play baseball at UMass Amherst. I was able to attend Kevin and Ben's signing. It's a really special event where they sign their letter of intent for the university that they're gonna be going to. The family is there, their friends are there. It was, and their coaches are there. It was really a nice event. So I wanna congratulate the families on this accomplishment and also congratulate the coaches who coached these student athletes over the last four years. It's, it's well, well received. I wanna go in a little bit more detail on what I reported out last week, or two weeks ago, on the Massachusetts School Building Association School Survey Report. Because I think we, we received a couple of questions about this report, so I just wanna clarify some things. Based on the report, the report is online. If you Google MSBA School Survey Report two thousand and sixteen, it's online. So the whole purpose of the survey, the last time the survey was completed was two thousand and ten. The survey was completed in two thousand and sixteen. And it should be noted that this is one of many tools that MSBA uses when they're assessing any applications for funding, for either school building projects, renovations, or repair projects. So it's just one piece of the data that they use. For Reading, seven of the eight schools were surveyed. As I mentioned, the last time Wood End was not because it was built as a new school in two thousand and seven. And no schools were surveyed that were built in the last ten years as brand-new structures. Each building was given a rating on a scale from one to four, one being the highest, four being the lowest, for two categories, building condition and general environment. So I wanna go in a little bit more detail of the two sets of ratings, which I did not do the last time. So all Reading schools received a rating of one for the general environment condition. So what does this mean? The categories in this rating include learning environment, which is space and educational quality, building condition rating, cleanliness and maintenance, building safety, which includes school security and fire life safety, universal accessibility, which is your site accessibility and building accessibility, academic sufficiency, which is the number of academic classrooms for enrollment, program sufficiency, which is the presence of specialized room in court spaces like gym, art, music, and instructional technology, which is your Wi-Fi access, power, infrastructure, and adequate classroom technology. So all Reading schools received the highest rating in those categories, which I think is a testament to our facilities department, our technology department, you know, in the things that we're trying to do to maintain the buildings that we, that we have. In the other category, which was the building condition rating, four of the seven schools, Barrows, the high school, Eaton, and Parker, received a rating of one. So that's the highest score. Coolidge and Birch Metal received a rating of two and Killam received a rating of three. So the criteria in this category include what's called a building analysis, which is your roofing, exterior windows, boilers, HVAC, structural soundness, exterior doors, exterior walls, interior floors, interior walls, et cetera. Your electrical service, your electrical lighting, a site condition analysis, which is your parking lot, driveways, walkways, playgrounds, playfields, your drainage. your drainage, your septic sewage and water supply, okay? So that brings us to really Killam. And, you know, in terms of the strengths, as I mentioned, Killam was rated a one in the general environment category. So this is a structurally sound building that had, that is well maintained, has adequate space and technology to do the, the types of programs that we, that we have in our elementary schools. They had an updated HVAC system and a roof replacement five years ago. I don't know if you remember, we did the Green Schools Repair Program. And as part of that program, we were able to put Killam in and get, get fifty percent reimbursement at the time for those two things. It also has a fully addressable, brand-new, within the last two years, fire alarm panel with smoke and heat detection. That isn't a fire suppression unit, it does not have a fully sprinkled building. But in terms of life safety, you, to have the, the fire alarm panel is actually a higher priority because that saves, saves lives, whereas your fire suppression unit saves property. So there's a difference there. And we do have two other buildings, school buildings, that do not have fully fire suppression, which is Joshua Eaton and Birch Metal. They are just partially fire, partial fire suppression.
That needs to be underscored because the, the box of the, the system, the warning system is the important piece. And I, I think that was, what did you say, a couple of years ago?
Two years ago, we put in the new fire alarm panels, yes. The security system and the procedures at Killam are very similar as the other five, four elementary schools. So the same security system exists, the same procedures that we use for safety and security exist is the same as the other elementary schools. And all of our schools are part of a comprehensive, integrated pest management policy. So if we do have little critters in the school, whether it be bugs or, or other things, we have a process that we use to address any of those types of things. Now, Killam does have some building deficiencies, and we know that. So handicap accessibility, it was built in nineteen sixty-nine when the laws were much different. The lead in the water, which we have mitigated with bottled water for the time being. There are aging windows and doors which go along with the fact that the building was built in nineteen sixty-nine. And there, there are some other, because of age, there are a few other areas that need to be updated and renovated. I've been doing some extensive research and will continue to do research on the MSBA process. There are certain criteria that, that MSBA requires for any school to be put on a list. And they range from enrollment issues to loss of accreditation to something that's, a, a building that's structurally unsound and safe, unsafe for students to be in, something that's going to prevent overcrowding because there's a bubble coming up in enrollment, short-term enrollment growth, or racial imbalance. Those are some of the categories that MSBA uses as their criteria. So I'm going to continue to do research on this, but I, I want the community to know that, that Killam is, is very structurally sound. We have spent significant funds over the last several years through the capital plan to keep it updated and addressed in the areas that need to be addressed. Because I know there's some things out there that, maybe some misconceptions about Killam. But it is a, it is a structurally sound building.
Yeah, I just appreciate all that work. And I know, John, you also referenced a webinar that you attended over the weekend.
Yes.
You know, gathering some more of this information. And I think it's really important because people, it's very hard for people to understand sort of as we go into this budget season and we're talking about operating budget, that capital is, is a different bucket of money. But I think people need to understand that over, I mean, I, I was first on the committee in two thousand and three. My kids attended that school. And over these years, it was, it's a good, solid building. It has some, the AD, the handicap accessibility is probably the, the single biggest issue, but we have really maintained that well. It, it, it is a building that we will, or not, I might not be on the committee, I don't think so. But, you know, that, that as a community, we're going to want to do something about in terms of, you know, perhaps a bigger renovation at some point in time. But in the meantime, we have always prioritized the projects. I think Joe Huggins does really, he's been in the district a long time. He does an outstanding job with the inventory and doing the inspections and keeping track of it. So I think certain people had was, if we passed an operating override, then we would forget about this building. And there's, there, that's just, that's not true, we're not forgetting about the building. The, as I, I talked with Ms. Dowd today, the capital plan, Town Capital Plan has a TBA in the number and it does not have a, a date, a year. And that's because we just don't know where that is. We're going to keep doing projects that we need to do to maintain the building. We don't know where that is yet. And it would be, it would create perhaps, you know, the wrong impression or misinformation if we put that in some out year. So I think, you know, maybe-
Just put a footnote to that.
Exactly, that's what they'll be a footnote.
Well, we don't want to put a year because then it's expected at that.
Exactly. So, and I, I think if, if any parents or anyone in the county community has questions, they should certainly feel free to call us. And I think Dr. Darg is going to publish something.
Yeah, I, I will put, I will put something together, basically what I, what I read tonight, I will put something together.
I can't remember, was, was Killam part of the performance contract?
Yes, that was the HVA.
That was.
Yeah, that, that was what we did with Killam at the time.
That's important.
Yes, yes. That's, that's my report.
Sandy, you're up.
All right. Twice in one year I get to talk to you.
And we appreciate it.
Well, thanks for having me. So we had our first parent university in, in October. It was a huge success. We had probably about a hundred and fifty people, maybe a little bit more than that, come, which I was pretty happy about because it was, what, eighty degrees out and sunny? So I was happy. But it was, we had a really good variety of workshops. We had two workshop sessions, parents could go to pick one of the workshops classes in the first workshop session and go to that, and then go to, to the second workshop session as well. So one of the biggest issues for parents was picking what they wanted, what they wanted to go to because they wanted to go to a lot more than just two. So, you know, we ended up, everything went very well. The keynote speakers, David and Aaron Walsh, were fabulous, everybody liked them. We also were able to have a lot of participation from staff here at the school. Some of them gave workshops themselves, Erica McNamara also, you know, gave a workshop. Kristin Morello did the, during the break, she provided food and coffee and things like that. So it was, that was really great because she had the opportunity to interact with parents, which she never has the ability to do. So it was, it was actually, I think some of the benefits of having this were more than what we expected. Parents were happy to be able to connect, that was some of the feedback we got. You know, they were happy to have professionals providing information about different topics that interested them. So it was, I, it, it was really successful across the board. They won another parent university. We were, I was lucky enough to get, write a grant and, you know, Reading Cooperative Bank supported it, ten thousand dollars to support it. So, you know, we, we couldn't have done it without them. But some of the, you know, high, some of the feedback that we did get, the overall experience was overwhelming, overwhelming, ninety-seven percent of people who responded to it. The survey said that they had an excellent or very good experience at Parent University. So you can't really ask for much more than that, but, but it went very well, so.
Thank you, I've read through the comments and it is just really amazing. Because the negatives are actually really positives because they're saying, I would have, the sessions are duplicated, so I could have attended a session in the afternoon, or that sort of, geez, I wish I had had this opportunity. My kids are a little older, sort of like, you know, wanting, and then people saying, oh, I'd really like to see this again, but focus on the, you know, teen issues as their children age and grow up. So, and the survey responses are great. Do you, do you know what, how many people answered the survey, was it at the?
Well, what I did to get, to make sure that I did get some of the surveys filled out is we had some donations for door prizes. So at the end of the second session, I had everybody come back to the PAC and fill out the evaluation. And they filled out the evaluation, we put a ticket in for the door prize. So that's how I got as many as I did. Otherwise, I don't know if I would have gotten all the feedback, but.
And clearly people took the time to do the evaluation because they wrote comments.
Yeah, they, they wrote a lot of comments.
I wish I could have attended.
Yeah, it was, they, a lot of, it was a really good opportunity for the district to, you know, provide information to parents that, you know, maybe had to do with the school. Like Facing History in Ourselves was one of the workshops. So we, there was a lot of, a lot of information presented. Also, before we even put together anything for the parent university, I sent out a survey and I got quite a bit of feedback about that. And that's how some of the topics that I picked for this, I was able to, to hone in on some of that, so.
I, I just wanted to say, I've really loved going to the Blue Ribbon Conferences and feeling what I take away really gives me a sense of what the power of professional involvement is for our teachers as well. And so when you were doing this, I was thrilled that other parents would also have this opportunity. Because it's a catalyst for learning more and thinking outside the box. And when kids come home with certain assignments or are saying something about a classroom, it gives some breadth to understand, it gives some other tools to understand what's being said. And read between the lines, and I think that's wonderful, so. And, and like Mrs. Webb, I read through these and I was really impressed by the care people took in thinking about their responses. Because at the end of these workshops, even if you're getting bribed to turn them in, which I see nothing wrong with.
Yeah.
It's still hard to be thorough in your comments because you're in a rush, you want to get home. I did have a question, I think I remember that you said you provided childcare for this?
Yes, we did, we did. So my extended day staff provided the care. We also had some high school volunteers who needed hours. So they were in the field, we did it in the field house, they were in the field house as well. We provided enrichment, so we had somebody come and provide enrichment so they would be thoroughly entertained, you know, all morning. So I feel like that is a huge piece of it too because there are parents that may not be able to come if we didn't provide the childcare, so. But that went really well and we def, you know, and my staff, they're all trained and they know how to manage everything. So I felt very comfortable with that piece of it and how they were doing that.
When is, you have one scheduled, another one scheduled for the future?
I, we're going to, going to do it around the same time again. You know, one, I think in October, probably the third weekend in October again. Because once, we were thinking about November, but the first weekend in November is SATs and we're a testing site. And then it's, then we have a holiday, Veterans Day. So it, we're probably going to keep it at the same time again next year.
How did the budgeting work out for it?
Great, it was spot, really spot on. We, either the biggest piece cost to it is, is obviously going to be the keynote, yeah. And that's a really important piece to this because that's your introduction and that's the one thing parents, you know, if, if you want to get them engaged right out, out of the gates, that you want a really good keynote. And they were awesome. So they also provided workshops too, so that was, they each did a workshop and the, the parents loved their workshops. So it, you know, I feel like that is an important piece of it. Moving into the next parent university, I'll, I'll be writing a grant again.
I think that's the important piece, is this was cost neutral to the operating budget, it was all grant funded, so there was no expenses incurred within the budget, so.
Yep.
Who did the one on preventative bio?
Doctor Bois. I don't even know how to say his last name. He, Tom Zaya, he, he somehow got referred to me through Tom Zaya and, you know. Yeah, I obviously didn't attend any, any of them, but it, I don't, I think it would be, things like that are helpful when it's provided in a different context probably, you know what I mean? But I think, you know, some of these topics, the parents are really interested in because they're hot topics. And there's things too that go on, you know, that can go on in the district that can be hot topics. Like the, the, I know a lot of parents are, talk a lot about, you know, the, the nutrition and the, you know, so next time we do this, Kristin Morello is going to give a workshop on nutrition. So it's a really good way to get, to help answer a lot of questions parents have because sometimes they make assumptions and, you know, it's great to have staff come in and do it.
Sandy, thanks for this report and the detailed responses in the PAC are really helpful stuff, a lot of work, we appreciate it. What did you learn, like what was your takeaway from the experience? What would you do the same next year and what would you do differently next year?
I would keep the workshop, I would keep it the same, the structure of it. I think it's really important to have the workshops be no more than an hour long. I know some people would want them to be longer, but I think it's really hard to do more. You know, I think one Saturday morning is plenty. I also liked Main Street with, you know, having the different groups on Main Street because, again, that gave parents the opportunity to interact with community. And they all liked that. So I don't think I would change the structure of it. I think I would probably look at some of the topics that we included and maybe think about it differently. You know, maybe send out another survey, what do parents want, you know, and the one coming up for the next, for the fall. You know, and kind of go from there. I feel like the next parent university, we're probably going to have a lot more parents because I know this got such a very good overwhelming response that we probably will get more people, so.
Two questions, one is, you said there were about a hundred and fifty people?
Yeah, yep.
What would be the capacity of a workshop, of a day like this?
Well, one, that's a good question. One of the things that obviously would be hard is space. There's only, you know, there's a distance learning room, there's a PAC. So that is going to control some of, of how many people we can have in a workshop. If it's a really, we had people pre-register, so I had a good idea of which workshops were going to have the most people in it. However, parents change their minds and go to different things, which is fine. But, you know, we, we used the PAC, for example, for David and Aaron Walsh's workshops, which was good because their workshops had a lot of people in them. You know, we used the distance learning room for- You know, we used the distance learning room for one of the larger workshops too. So I think for a well, workshop that's well attended, I would run it twice. You know, session one and session two, to give parents the opportunity to go to it. I mean, you know, we would try to accommodate. We also had one in the library too.
Sort of related to that question is we have a lot of, education's really changed. And have you considered including seniors in this kind of an education day? I don't know how many you'd get, but I'm wondering if there might be seniors or grandparents or who are being asked.
That's actually a good point, yeah.
That might want to understand better what happens.
Yeah, no, that's a great point.
Are being faced by parents.
Yeah, I, I think that's a really good point and, and, you know, we, I know when we did this, I did have people, staff. Some of the staff wanted to come. I had people from other, outside of Redding want to come. You know, and obviously we, I think, yeah, we, I would absolutely, you know, I think that's a really good point. That there probably are some topics that would interest seniors, you know, to get to know our district better and get to know what's going on in the community better.
Quick question. So was the, talking about the types of workshops that were interested the participants, was, I assume there was a gender imbalance, but you shouldn't maybe make assumptions. Like was it fifty percent women and fifty percent men?
Actually, I'm, there were a lot of fathers and a lot of mothers. I'm going to say it was, yeah, it was, there were a lot of fathers there.
That's great.
Lots. Because what they did, like the mother would go to, like if two workshops were at the same time, one would go to the, so.
And was there any fee for that?
No.
And the childcare was also free?
It's, it was all free.
This is amazing.
It was all free to the parents and childcare was free. So there was absolutely no cost to the parents.
And that was a Redding co-grant?
Yes, yep.
Did you have to fit this in with your regular responsibilities?
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
She's, she's been planning this for, since June?
Yeah, they had, yeah, they, John helped me a lot, so. But it was, yeah, it was, it was fun. Yeah, it was a lot of fun.
Was there, where did the model for it come from? Or is it just, you guys said, we got to do this and sort of?
There's a couple of the school districts that have tried. Does Burlington and Wakefield have done it in the past?
I'm a Burlington resident, so, and my kids go to, I have a high school or a middle schooler. So I went to the one in Burlington to see what that was all about. And so when I went to that one, when I, originally we got the notification that they were going to do this. I forwarded to John and Craig and I'm like, this is a great idea. And then I went to it to see what, I was like, this is, this is cool. You know, they had a lot of information, things that, you know, as a parent, you might, you'd be interested in. So what we did, you know, is figured out how, you know, how are we going to pay for it? Who do, you know, things like that. But, but it was actually a lot of fun, you know, to, to put together. And it definitely is fun to be there during the day because with extended day, everybody knows that I'm Sandy, but I don't know a lot of the parents. So, you know, it also is an opportunity for me to, to get, to, to know some of the parents as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is that just a one-year grant or?
Yes.
Grant writing again.
But, but they, we, we received some preliminary information. They're, they're very interested in continuing the partnership.
They were very impressed with it overall, so we did get really good feedback.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, thank you.
So we're hopeful we will continue the partnership with them.
Be interesting to know what, maybe someday, what, if we did want to continue it and there wasn't a grant. I'd be curious what, what tuition would be for something like that. Just because you didn't want to just get rid of it because you don't have a grant. Maybe it's still something we'd want to.
And entertain, it depends what the capacity is, whether you allow, like we do with Blue Ribbon, where you bring people in that are basically tuition or registration fees.
It could offset some of the local people's costs.
But I think focusing on our, obviously on our community is first and foremost.
The calendar?
Sure, for the.
So I'm going to move to approve the 2018, 19 school year calendar.
Dr. Doherty, let's.
Yeah, I'll, I'll walk you through some of the highlights. The calendar that's being proposed is very similar to the calendar that's been proposed for the last few years. So a couple of, couple of things. School would begin for teachers on August 27th. They would have two days prior to students coming in, which would be August 29th. And just, so the committee is aware and the community is aware that the 27th and 28th, those two days prior to when students start is actually in the collective bargaining agreement. That there are two days prior to when students arrive. So the first day of school would be scheduled for August 29th. You heard this evening from Craig, the, the value of that November 7th election day, professional development day. So that continues to be built into this calendar, which is November 6th next year. In addition, there is another professional development day, which is March 22nd. And that would be the annual Blue Ribbon Conference that we, that we hold here in the district. And then parent teacher conferences would be held on the 16th. So all of those dates are very similar in timeframe to the dates that we have this year.
We coordinate with the town on the, I'm just thinking of the election. I know there wasn't one this year, but I don't know what next year is.
Yes.
No, I'm talking about November.
Yes, yes. And the town clerk has asked us on the, on those years where there is an election, that we not have school, especially the presidential year.
Right.
But next year is a mid-cycle election, so there are, I think there's a senate race. And so my guess is, is that this would be advantageous as well. Because all the voting is here at the high school. According to DESI regulations, we have to build in five snow days, which is why you see the school year five days longer. And so, and we have averaged over the last few years, five snow days. So if all five snow days are used, the last day of school will be on June 21st. If no snow days are used, the last day of school will be on June 14th. And just as, an aside, because I know it was brought up this year. Veterans Day next year, because it falls on a Sunday, the state holiday is on a Monday. So there is no school on Monday, the 12th. Whereas this year that was different because it fell, it fell on a Saturday.
Which won't happen again.
For another seven years. So that's the highlights of, of the, the RTA has also reviewed this as per the collective bargaining agreement and they support this calendar.
I'm wondering how, I know that this summer, there was a committee that worked together to hone in on the accommodation policy. And I'm just wondering what feedback you got in terms of whether it worked better having the Jewish holidays in and whether there, whether it was, people's time was honored and what the feedback was.
The committee never discussed the calendar. The committee only focused on the accommodation policy.
Right, but the implementation of the accommodation policy impacts how, whether, how it works to have the Jewish holidays as part of in-school or out-of-school.
So you passed the policy in September.
Right.
And we've had two Jewish holidays since then.
And I'm wondering how that went?
We've heard no issues with the way it was implemented this year.
Okay, and the attendance figures were?
Very similar to, to previous years when we've had the Jewish holidays. The student absentee is up a little bit and that's understandable. And staff, I don't know the exact numbers, but we did have some staff. And this year we did have, as part of the collective bargaining agreement, there are religious days now built in in the collective bargaining agreement for staff. So there were staff that, that took those days for religious holidays.
Can you just clarify, there aren't specific days, there are, that are, there are, they have the opportunity.
To use them.
To use them, yeah, if they are.
For whatever their religious purposes. It's not a specific day, it's that they have.
Correct, yes.
So it's sort of aligned with the overall, the policy, which.
Correct.
An accommodation.
Yeah.
Is what it is.
Yeah, it's an accommodation.
Yeah, that we now have to teach. My concern is actually the backwards thing. The attendance not going, the absences not going up more is more concerning to me. Because what I hear from people is the concern that students are too afraid to miss their classes, which sets up the conflict between their religious practices and taking the day to go to temple and being at school. And so the veracity of the implementation of that accommodation policy makes a big difference. You know, whether kids are being encouraged to take that day to go be with their family, to be at temple, as opposed to worrying about what they'll miss.
So I think the way the policy was rewritten this year, which the committee approved, was it did just that. There was no homework assigned for any student in the district on those days. There was no tests, quizzes or projects assigned or due on those days. There was no new teaching material going on. That was made pretty clear in the new, the newly approved policy.
And the feedback from the teachers?
I've heard no negative feedback from this year's policy. Implementation.
I have actually a comment on that topic and then I wanted to switch gears if it's okay. My comment on that topic is anecdotal, so admittedly, but I have two children in the district. They go to two particular schools, so I can't say that this is consistent across the board. But several times in September, a couple of times in September, both came home and said, I don't have homework tonight because it's a Jewish holiday. And that, I think, is helpful in two reasons. One, it means they understood why they didn't have homework that night and it raised awareness about a religion that isn't ours. But that, you know, there's a healthy respect. So from my perspective, admittedly anecdotal, very limited, there did seem to be good implementation and it led to some positive outcomes, so. Oh, and I have one, yes, thank you. I also think that given the, the issue of anxiety that we have, this is certainly not the reason we did this policy and I wouldn't say at all, but a benefit is, I don't think it's the worst thing every now and then for kids to just not have homework. You know, it's not, it's an, it's not an intended consequence, consequence or a reason to, to do it, but it is nice for kids to get that break throughout the year, so, another benefit. But what I wanted to talk to you a little bit is, oh.
Go ahead. No, go ahead, finish.
Switching gears, is November. You know, I know this, we've heard from people who struggle with all of the kind of random days off in November. So I just want to clarify with Mr. Martin that that election day, you do continue, you do anticipate that you're going to continue to be working with other districts on that day? That's one of the rationales for taking election day. I, I heard what you said about the town clerk and there is a mid-cycle election, but there's also.
I mean, clearly that's up to each community's school committee, but what I'm hearing is the number of communities that are choosing that day as their in-service day has been growing for that reason.
And so then obviously Thanksgiving, Veterans Day, can't move those. So that leaves the 16th and I am, my memory is that that's tied to report cards and.
Those are conferences, yeah.
Yeah, they're conferences. So you move it to October, say, the teachers and parents don't have enough data. You move it to December and it's too far after a report card. So I'm assuming that date is actually pretty hard based on reporting cycles. Am I correct?
That is, that is correct.
All right, well then I don't have a solution for it. Just thought I'd talk it through.
November, November's always been a difficult month educationally because of holidays and the conference day.
Yeah, I feel, I, I, yeah, I wish there were an easy solution for it.
The election day in-service day added to what was already, but essentially because every other year or certainly every four years you're being asked anyway, it seemed to be consistent with other districts.
I do like, I do like the consistency of, if we're going to take election day off every year, of establishing that. Having, is, I, I do think that's preferable to every four years having it off. And, and I assume on the off years, you do something in October. There is an argument to be made for consistency and the community just getting used to how this looks, so, thank you.
So I have just two, two issues. One is in September, I think initially when we, well, this is way back when we started before Labor Day and, and worked with the teachers and, you know, that the, the two days before, we did not have the Friday before Labor Day off. We only had the Monday, at least for one of the years. And then we added the Friday before. And John, you can sort of quickly add to this, but part of that rationale was the teachers are getting their two days in-service, a lot of training that has to be done with them and, and professional development. So a lot of requirements and compliance stuff that goes on. And then the students get basically two days or the younger kids get a day and a half, I think. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, that's, that's correct. Elementary, it, the Wednesday is a.
Right.
Yeah, it's an early day, yeah.
And so the idea there is it just sort of gets them going and then they, you know, step into, you know, a four-day week, a two-day week, a four-day week, a five-day week. So they sort of get going.
Ease back into the school year.
Right, and the Friday, I think we felt at the time when we initially did this that there were quite a few other districts that, that started before Labor Day that did the Friday holiday. When we first made some shifts to that, and again, this is prior to 2010, I think, it was, we, we were like one of the districts that didn't have the Friday and other districts did. So I just wondered if you could, if you have anything else to add to that rationale? But that's, in my mind, it seems like a lot of families do like to get an early jump on any travel for that weekend and that affords them.
Yeah, the Friday has never seemed to be a concern. It is a workday for, for 52-week employees. So the buildings are open. But it is, that's not seemed to have been an issue with families. That's never come up.
Compromise for people who would rather wait till after the Friday to start. I mean, there's this group, a second group, and that they've come years past to speak as well.
Right, and that was part of it. It was part of that compromise. Because people, you know, really enjoyed that, thought of that Labor Day weekend as the last weekend. So it just gave families a little bit more ability to, to take advantage of that. I have a, a follow-up to that is just, you know, sometimes, and I think Jean was highlighting it in November, but we have the Wednesday half-day, which as we know from some of our discussions last year, you know, prior to the failed override, you know, we have been talking about how do we put that time back in learning and, and, you know, build the planning time back into the teacher's day at the elementary level. And I really think that that would go a long way to addressing some of the things that where we end up, we have a professional development or a parent teacher conference in service day. And for, especially for elementary parents, that gets like added to the Wednesday half-day, which may already be challenging for them to manage. And, and while that, that's something that, you know, I think about, I think, you know, more important to me is the ability for us to provide the teachers the time to do their planning and collaboration and to get that time on learning back for our students. So, you know, hopefully that's something that we can look at in the future.
What are you referring to, the November day or?
No, the Wednesdays, putting the.
That's a collective bargaining thing.
Right, right. Well, it's more of a, a budget. It, it's something that we had on the table.
It's collective bargaining and it's a budget.
It's something we had on the table, but we, you know, we weren't able to move it forward. And I just think it puts us, it is part of the issue when you have a week and you've got the Wednesday half-day and then you have something else on top of that. So I think it does make it a little challenging sometimes for the elementary parents.
I have a question about the history, to Elaine, what you were saying, the history of the, the rest of August school, right? So the twenty-ninth and thirtieth, those, the day plus and two days, the day plus in elementary school, and then two days in other schools. Have we had discussions in the past with school committee when this was, the history of this, and just kind of how teachers and students view this, having these two days right at the beginning of the year in August, and then having a very long break, and then coming back after Labor Day? As opposed to, like, some districts choose to start just after Labor Day for students. I'm not talking about the teacher and service days, just for students. And I, you know, they tack it on in June very often, right? They'll have a couple of extra days in June after the snow days, if you need the snow days. Have we, have we debated the benefits or, you know, costs of that, and kind of, could someone just give me the quick history of that? Why did we come out where we did?
I think, John.
Anyone who's here.
I can, yeah, no, I can certainly, yeah.
Right, it was.
Most, I mean, what I hear is anecdotal from, from staff. And staff like the fact that they, students come in for a couple of days that week, then they ease into a four-day week the following, and then they go a full week the third week. So from an educational standpoint, they can get a lot of their, the things that you need to do the first couple of days, school routines, the procedures, you know, all of the things, the nuts and bolts things that you have to do, those get done in those first two days. So right after Labor Day, you come back, you hit the ground running. And then you have a shorter week, it's a four-day week, and then you hit a full week. So staff have always liked that, and then they are able to ease into it from a teaching perspective as well.
When do we start the August, the two days in August?
Oh, this has been, I was, I was a teacher when we were down, so.
Quite a while.
I think it's even before that.
Right, Pat was the superintendent.
Do we, I just, do we ever, have we ever looked at attendance rates?
Attendance rates are very strong on those two days. You talking about student attendance?
Yes.
Yeah, it's very strong.
I just, just to fill that out though.
That's good to hear, because I've heard people say, oh, you don't have to go back, and they don't start teaching until after Labor Day, so that's good to hear.
Yeah, no, no, it's very strong. It's in the high nineties on both days, ninety percent, the high ninety percent.
There was a big debate when this was done. Were you also, because it was between two thousand, I was on the committee from two thousand three to two thousand ten, we did it in that timeframe, and I don't remember which year.
We discussed it again.
It was a significant discussion, and there were some pieces of it too that said the students are sort of more ready to learn in September than they are in June.
June.
So the additional days in, in June tend not to be as efficient and effective for the learners. And so that was, you know, one of the issues. But it, there was a lot of debate, and it was a big shift, and I think, you know, overall, the, it works really well academically and for our district. And I think since then, more districts have, have done that. I don't know if they've shifted, I don't know if they've shifted.
Yeah, I'm not know the, I don't know the split, but there is still some that start after Labor Day. I know North Threading does. I think Andover does, starts after Labor Day. So there are a few. It's, I would say it's pretty evenly split.
They often have a stressful time come June when we've had snow days because they're threatened with going into July, which they can't do by contract.
Right.
So they're looking at how else they're going to fill in the time because they have to have their hundred and eighty days of. But I was going to say that what, what Mrs. Webb said in terms of the effectiveness of learning and teaching in August when kids are excited to come to school, as opposed to in June when they're really fried. The teachers are fried, it's hot, it's, it's just a very hard time to make the learning time count. And so that plus if snow days have been added, it's very difficult. I've also heard the discussion, I was, I think we revisited it when I first came back on in two thousand fourteen, and we talked about the easing in to school, like you were mentioning with the two days, then the four days, and then that that is actually very helpful. We did get a letter from a parent concerned about the anxiety caused by going for two days and then having a break. But that, I, I just think the easing in, a small dose and then a bigger dose of the school. There might be anxiety anyways, but I'm, I, I like that this is the, the way to ease in, and I worry about time on task that's not effective time in June.
I feel like tonight's my night for sharing anecdotal information, but this is anecdotal, but I'll add it to. My experience back when I was teaching, which was ten years ago, but my district had a similar calendar, and I loved it. I was teaching at the high school level, and I loved, that first day, we did some introductory activities, here's the syllabus, here's the expectations, here's the policies and procedures. Do a writing assignment tonight, hand it in tomorrow. I have a long weekend to read all my students' writings, get calibrated, and then you just hit the ground running on Tuesday. So I found it, as a, at the high school level, just a really effective way to get all the administrative stuff out of the way, so you can really start teaching that first week in September. Because there's a lot of administrative stuff you have to do, just do. And then my other experience is as a parent of elementary students, it's subjective, and people will disagree. But, you know, if you have a six or a seven-year-old coming off of summer vacation, which when you're that young feels like an eternity.
Yeah.
Going back to sitting in a classroom is a huge adjustment. So I personally like the two days of it, then four days to relax. I like, I think the ease in can be very beneficial for anxiety, just adjusting for younger students. So it's anecdotal, but that's my take.
I also think it's important to understand the broadened definition of, of education and learning, that it's not just time on task with math or English. It's also building the community in your classroom that's going to support the learning over time. And a lot of that is what happens at the beginning. And that's as important, I think, as the lessons on the particular math skills or whatever it is. Not in competition to it, but enabling it.
Yes.
Well, thank you to everyone, that was, that was all very helpful, because I didn't have all that history, but totally separate.
Well, I mean, it seemed to have forgotten that a couple of years ago, there were parents in here complaining about the early start. And that the school committee, I'm pretty sure when Caruso was chairman, moved it back and were headed in the other direction. And that was only two years ago.
We haven't started both.
No. We've always, my kids have been in the system for six years.
No, because of how it fell that year, it would have been, it wouldn't have started till like the sixth or the seventh or something. But there was that discussion.
We, the discussion was if, as long as the month had an A in front of it, that is when we were going to start, right? In August. We've never started, since I've been on the committee for eight years, we've never started in September since I've been here. It's been in August.
We had that discussion, I think that's what I'm talking about when I first started in two thousand fourteen. We discussed it, but came to the same conclusion that starting in August was better.
And Caruso's not here anymore, so. I say that affectionately. Yes.
Someone tell me why this is a bad idea. Could you do parent-teacher conferences on election day?
Uh, you, you can't, because the elementary.
No, because they need, they need the schools to vote, right?
The elementary would not be ready yet.
Yeah.
That's why, right? It's not, I just want to make sure that's not a possibility to, to the point Miss Borowski raised earlier, so. You can't, you just, you don't have the space to do it. Is that right?
Well, and you wouldn't, you have the professional development opportunities on that day as well.
But it's a space issue as well as a, you could put the PD somewhere else in theory, right?
No, they're just, they wouldn't be ready yet. The elementary and wouldn't be ready yet.
It's, it's a week before, it's really, Tuesday versus Friday?
No, no, wait, he's saying, could you put the sixteenth?
So the sixteenth is the.
Parent-teacher conference.
Parent-teacher conference is the sixth, the previous Tuesday is election day. And so I'm just asking, could you do parent-teacher on the sixth? Have school on the sixteenth and take a day off of June?
The elementary would not be ready on the sixth to have parent-teacher conferences.
Okay.
And I believe you would still have to make up that day because of the contract. Aren't, aren't those five days?
Well, so.
You could put it somewhere else, you could put it in June, right?
Oh, you're just saying do it in June.
Do, do an in-service in June at the end, when the kids are fried, as you said.
The additional, so, space issue though, is that then you would have all of the parents, if you did the parent-teacher, coming to the campuses, well, especially this campus, right? For parent-teacher conference type stuff when it's election day. And they, I mean, the goal there is to.
Yeah, you wouldn't be able to have both parent-teacher conferences in, and especially a presidential election year, you wouldn't be able to do that.
So that, I think, is the space conundrum.
So we have a motion?
Yes, we do.
Just, just also in answer to that, I think the effectiveness of professional development is also being able to use it with your children, with your students. So if you put the professional development in at the end of the year when the teachers are tired and they're not going to be able to use it much with the kids that are in their classes then, then you're having them engage in June for next fall. So I'm not sure also the timing of maximizing the impact of the professional development time by putting it in June. Just my opinion.
Good.
Be ready for us.
Yeah, oh, we already, that's right, we're.
Yes.
Any, any, all those in favor?
First reading, do you want me to do the motion first?
Yes.
Move to accept the first reading of revised policy J I C F B bullying prevention.
Is there a second?
Second.
And.
I'll do it, I'll start reading.
Start reading.
I'll start reading, and you can say.
Yep. It's page twenty-five of the packet.
Mrs. Webb, would you like me to?
Um, go ahead, Ms. Borowski.
Yeah, okay. School committee policy J I C F B, the Reading Publics, uh, bullying prevention. The Reading Public Schools endeavors to maintain a safe learning environment where students can achieve.
And move that we abstain from the reading and move on to the discussions.
Yes.
No offense, you were doing it beautifully.
Five zero. Dr. Dory.
Thank you. This is, actually has two parts to it. Tonight, you're doing the first reading on, on the J E I C F B. Where this originated from is, and I, I have put a letter from Michael Joyce, who is our Student Services Legal Counsel at your, at your desk. Every two years, we are required to update our bullying prevention plan as stated in the bullying prevention law. And as part of that review, I always have our legal counsel review to make sure that, that we're following all the procedures with any updated information. And during that process, Attorney Joyce stated that there should be a shift in the school committee policy. So tonight, you have in front of you the current policy and the suggested revised policy. I didn't redline it because it's really two different policies. It actually would have not made any sense to you. So that's why you have two separate documents. The one that says draft is the one that you're doing a first reading on tonight, and then a couple of pages later is the current policy. What Attorney Joyce is suggesting is to shift the policy so that it is truly just a policy and the actual implementation language is put into, which it already is, but is put into the bullying prevention plan. So there's some reasons for this. First, and I'm, I'm just paraphrasing from Attorney Joyce's letter. By delegating the development of the bullying prevention intervention policy to the superintendent, it allows the district to respond to changes to the law expeditiously without having to go through the slower process of school committee approval. Second, by delegating the oversight of the development of the plan to the superintendent, it preserves the school committee's traditional role in establishing policy, which is consistent with several of other of Reading's school committee policies. And third, because the bullying prevention plan is required to be updated by all schools biannually, in accordance with the statute, the delegation of the oversight to the superintendent will permit the district with consultation from relevant constituencies to meet this requirement more efficiently and effectively. It does not change our process, it doesn't change the way we address these. It just makes it more of a policy versus an implementation document.
So this is our first biannual review of this?
No, the bullying prevention pol, the plan, we've actually had in place
Right.
since two thousand thirteen, when the law was originally passed, requiring us to have a bullying prevention intervention policy.
And.
We are required every couple of years to update it.
And that was part of the two, two, two thousand thirteen?
Yes, so we've done, we did it in fifteen, and now this is seventeen, yes. Yes.
I think this is a great idea, and I would be an advocate for any opportunity we have to separate out policy from procedure to take it, because I think it is cleaner, I think it is better. And I thought Attorney Joyce's memo was really compelling, so I think it's a really good idea.
Yes.
I have a question about the definition of bullying, which is in two places. And I'm just, I want to, I have a question about one paragraph in here, it's on page nineteen of the plan. It's on page twenty-five of the handout, so it's the, you go to page nineteen of the plan, it says definition of bullying prohibited. Yeah, it says nineteen in the lower right corner.
Not all the pages are numbered.
The plan, the plan is numbered, so that's what's planned.
Okay, this is the plan.
Okay, page nineteen there. So the question, and, I mean, you can update us later if need be, but. So the paragraph number one under section A, the definition of bullying, right, means, dot, dot, dot. So that paragraph agrees with the statute, MGLC, chapter thirty-one, et cetera, right, that's cited. And it also agrees with appendix B of the policy, so that's good, right? So appendix B of the policy, page twenty-five, definition of bullying. It's got bullet points instead of Roman numerals, but otherwise it's the same, right? Everyone followed? So I'm, I'm good with that. It's this paragraph in the plan on page nineteen that follows that paragraph that I want to understand. Where did that come from? Because to my reading of this, it's, it's a paragraph that starts with the behavior must interfere with, and then it goes on, right? So to me, that paragraph limits the statutory definition of bullying. And I want to know why we have a more narrow definition. If this is what that paragraph does, why do we have a more narrow definition of what bullying is in our plan than the Massachusetts general law has in the law? So I just, it, it may have come from a different section, but chapter seventy-one, section thirty-seven oh, subsection A of Mass General Law says, as far as I can tell, quick reading again, as far as I could tell in a quick reading, it agrees with what you have in paragraph one there. It agrees with what we have in the policy for the school committee. So I'm good with the policy, the J I C F B policy, that's correct. It's this extra paragraph, did that come from somewhere else in the law? I just want to make sure that's Massachusetts law, and that's not, we're not narrowing the definition of what bullying is, and therefore restricting the ability to enforce the law to exclude activities that would meet the statutory definition of bullying. So that's my one question.
I will check with Attorney Joyce, because he reviewed this bullying prevention plan.
Thank you.
To see.
And I'll abstain on this, if we're going to go to vote on this, I'll abstain on it because of that.
We're not voting tonight.
First reading, yeah.
It's a first reading.
Yeah, that's fine.
I just need to be really clear that I know which one is the, I'm having a little trouble, sorry to interrupt, but I thought I was, which one is the new policy?
The one that says draft.
Right here.
Starts on.
Right there, good.
This, so everything else before that is the existing, is.
Oh, it's the plan.
It's aft, no, no, the, the, the current policy is after the draft.
The policy we're reviewing to change to?
The one we're replacing.
The current policy, the one that currently is in place.
Yes.
Is after the draft policy.
Okay.
The one that says draft is the one that you are reviewing tonight. What is before that is the actual bullying prevention plan.
Here's the.
That we are required to have by statute.
This is the current.
Right. This is the draft, and the pages in front of this is the plan, which is being taken out of the policy. Nick's question was on.
Yeah, that paragraph, I need to clarify that.
Or just drop a footnote to where, where else it is in the law, it may be somewhere else. I just want to make sure it agrees with what the statute says.
Yes.
I think that I remember a conversation about that paragraph that. I think that I remember a conversation about that paragraph that, uh, Mr. Boyden had asked about. I think it was trying to maintain the connection to the schools, so that it wasn't, if there were bullying behaviors that have, have been disconnected to the schools, the schools were not necessarily empowered or, or mandated to intervene in those. I might be wrong, but that, I'm talking about that paragraph on page nineteen.
I think it just needs to be checked out because I think there's also-
Yeah, I'll, I'll check with our legal counsel.
A discontinuity then in the current policy on the bottom of the page. The current policy, so after the draft, right? We have the draft and, and that's basically two and a half pages. Again, the bullying definition, as Mr. Bobin said, is the same. But then you have this paragraph, and in fact, it's different because one says the behavior must interfere with an employee's ability to perform his or her duties. This says the behavior must interfere with a student's academic performance or ability to learn.
Oh, it says it in this, too. Starts with employee, then it goes on, or would it suit?
Yes.
Yeah, it was, if it's-
That is, that is concerning, 'cause it's another test that has to be met for it to be bullying. You, you, you know what I mean?
I'll check, I'll check with Attorney Joyce.
Good.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Do we have to vote on the first reading?
No.
We have a motion.
No, we both.
Oh, we moved to, no, we have a motion to accept the first reading.
You have to move to accept the first reading, correct?
We got it. So, we just have to accept the first reading. This is a good first reading, 'cause we gave some feedback.
Yep.
We're not accepting the policy, we're just accepting the-
Can I, oh, I need one more question.
Yep.
Um, it was used, it's a question on the language used. So, I've heard recently, as opposed to using the word, um, I think we changed out of the word perpetrator to aggressor. I've also heard the term harm-doer of recent.
The, the language that's used here is by, is the law.
Is law.
It's, right.
And that hasn't been changed. Okay, thank you.
Back to the vote.
What are we voting on?
We're voting just to accept.
Accept the reading?
The first reading, yes.
Yep.
Not the policy. So, go ahead.
Yep, move to, uh, oh, one more thing?
We had one calendar item.
Okay.
Yeah, oh, yes, you're right.
Um, so, we're asking that, uh, currently we, the next meeting is scheduled for December fourth. We're asking that the December fourth meeting get moved to December eleventh.
Okay.
I can do that.
Well, it's not a vote, uh, it's just kind of a consensus. Uh, but if you don't know now, that's fine.
I'm okay with that.
So, we need to get, just get, but Nick's got a chat.
Okay, then, uh, we'll move to enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and not to return to open session.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you.